Today with Anna Casey-Cox. Which I'm actually surprised that even got that correct. Because for some reason, my brain only allowed her to have one name and a surname. Um, and you're standing in which side of the roof?
The east.
The east, my side, sweet. I'm starting to build up the number of east siders I'm interviewing.
Yeah.
Um, and for anyone who doesn't actually know or has never seen one before, over there is a bicycle. It's one of those things you use to get from A to B without having to be stuck in a tin box. Um, and Anna is a keen cyclist. Um, and I'm making the giant assumption that you would advocate for cycling in Hamilton and better cycling and infrastructure in Hamilton. If you got under council.
Yes.
Um, that's not exactly a stretch if anyone knows you. Um, but there's also, you can represent the, um, um, environmental side of things and dealing with climate change and how not just cycling, but a number of other things, but since we're on about cycling here, cycling can contribute to, um, helping to reduce climate change or at least have less of an impact.
Um, yeah.
Because we have a lot of people who are one person in a car driving around where they, excuse me, where they could have cycled. Yes, there are people that will never cycle because of why they're in the car or because of health reasons, et cetera, et cetera. But nowadays with e-bikes in particular, there's a lot of people that are driving around, one person in a car to go to the dairy or go out for coffee or whatever, who could. You rode here and we were expecting pouring rain.
We were expecting pouring rain, but I, and I said to you, I would still probably bike in pouring rain. Having said that, I don't always, I'm not like a, I do have a car, a car, and I do use a car on occasion. And particularly when I'm, you know, moving stuff around, because that's one of the challenges of a bike.
Yeah.
Um, but I do think more of us could bike more often. And I think one of the things that has happened recently at Go Eco is we've been doing a survey on the staff around our transport uses. And what's interesting about doing survey is that it motivates you to, to be better, you know, like, you know, so we're an environment centre, right? So we're promoting biking, we're promoting public transport. So for us to perhaps hop in cars is maybe, you know, like, you know, we have to be role models for reducing carbon emissions, et cetera. So the survey actually motivated me to bike more and recognise when I could bike more. So for example, just this week, um, we had an event at Go Eco and I was making some soup and I needed an extra crock pot to make the soup. And I thought, oh, I'll probably have to drive because I've got a crock pot. But I, but I figured it out, it couldn't fit in the, um, bags on the back.
I've got bungies that will strap it to the bag.
But it could fit in a backpack that I had, so there you go. So off I went.
See, if you had a cargo bike, it would be even easier.
It would be. And, and you know, some of these things that people say, oh, they're so expensive relative to a car, they're not as expensive. Um, and this electric bike was probably one of the cheaper versions because it's a folding one as well.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Which is quite, um, quite handy if I was going anywhere on a bus, I can fold it up in the back and, you know, um, get it out again.
Yeah, um, yeah, see, I worked out the other day, if, if you don't take into account the price of the bike, because you may not be doing the same with the car, my bike averages less than a thousand dollars a year since I've had it to maintain it, keep it going. Because I've had to change a few things on it, replace a seat, things like that.
Yeah, I had to replace my crank gear.
And if you compare that to, a friend of mine, a friend of mine worked out what it cost him per year to run his car. Um, and it was quite interesting when we compared numbers. I can't remember what the numbers were off the top of my head.
But yours was, yours was more affordable.
But, um.
Has it a guess?
He decided that I should be shouting him coffee because he's poor and hard done by. Because he's got to pump so much into his car.
Yeah, well, my son's actually had that realisation recently too. Because, you know, he's been at home and using his car, um, and maybe not, uh, oh, it was, it was his first car, so it was his first, um, warranty fitness, so that's right. And there was, he needed to get some new tyres. And so it suddenly dawned on him that there was all these expenses that he was gonna then have to foot. So he's living in Auckland and so public transport has become more, um, you know, appealing. Having, having been met with those costs.
And that's one thing with places like Auckland, they've got a good public transport system.
Yeah.
And you do have to learn how to use it, um, but, um, you know, you look at the traffic congestion in, in Auckland.
Um, yeah, makes sense for one of us. Whereas here, buses are a little less frequent and you can end up waiting quite a long time.
Yeah, but then the bus system we've got now is far better than when I came here in 1987.
Oh, yeah, a lot better, yeah.
I'd come from Wellington's bus system to Hamilton's in 1987 and go, do they know what a bus is? And it's got, I've seen it get better and better. Same with the cycling infrastructure. I've cycled all my life.
It's definitely getting better and better.
And I'm not afraid to cycle. Um, and as I pointed out, something else, I've had one actual road accident um, in my entire cycling career.
That's pretty awesome.
Um, and I've seen the changes in infrastructure and things like that change over time gradually. And this is a thing for anyone who does want to see this change keep going. We do need to ensure that, um, we keep a council that is decidedly friendly towards that. Because we've had three years of reasonably good progress.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to keep that moving and we know that you need at least two terms to get a noticeable change to where people will start to pick it up and keep it moving.
Well, hopefully we get more support from central government on it too, right?
Well, yeah, there's, there's that aspect as well.
Funding from Waka Portahy has been a bit, um, hard to get.
Yeah.
And that's why the school links, you know, like I've been looking forward to that for, for a while now. And we've had very, made various submissions and, you know, advocated for it. Because it makes so much sense to get our kids cycling to school. Because you know, like you were saying before, it becomes normal, right? We want, we want cycling to be normal in our city. And yeah, that's, that's better when you're younger, like you've been cycling your whole life. So, you know, it's, it's your normal.
And as I was saying to you before, before I started recording this, um, my life, and it took me a while to realise this happened, but my life has been shaped by riding a bike. Where I've chosen to live, not just distance wise, but where I'm most likely to ride. So that from my place, most of the time, I'm either going through controlled lights or I'm doing left-hand turns, be it the most of the places I use, right? Because they're the easy ones on a bike.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you've figured out your ways around, yeah.
Yeah, and there's certain places, if there were too many roundabouts between me and town, I wouldn't live the other side of those roundabouts.
Yeah, yeah.
And weird things like this.
That's awesome. You've actually chosen where you live for biking.
Yeah, when I, when I chose the place I decided to live at, one of the testing factors in all the places I looked at when I shifted was can I park my bike inside? Because it either needs a shed, a lockable shed that's mine, or I need to be able to park the bike inside because I have a piece of plastic, a piece of plastic that sits on the carpet.
There's a lot of discussion at the moment about this, you know, urban density and how we're, um, where is where I'm gonna park the cars?
Yeah.
So, you know, your issue of needing a space for your bike seems like a little bit easier to figure out, you know, like, so that's another encouragement. If we're gonna have more urban density, more people on bikes would, would be helpful.
Well, if you've got a, got a four.
And a few less cars.
If you've got a four or five storey apartment block, right? And you take one ground floor unit and cut it out devoted to solid, good storage of bikes with suitable, so people could lock their own bike up and be safe.
Yeah.
That's just equivalent of, it doesn't even need to be one, it's equivalent of about half, half an apartment for that. And that would cater to everyone in the building.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Now, anyone knows how much space it would take for the same number of cars.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and when, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't, there isn't a place for cars. Because I think, you know, I've had to ferry, you know, people left, right and centre around town. And it's pretty tricky to do on a bike, like you have to, you know, you're gonna, you know. So there, so there are times where a car is definitely needed, but, um, we could do better with our biking. And I think we were talking about before the need to, to increase people's confidence in biking.
Yes.
Um, because I do think that is a barrier for people. People haven't been on a bike for a really long time or whatever. And you said infrastructure is really important and I think it definitely is. But also we talked about having like, I don't know what you'd call them, it were education sessions, but tours around town and you might even lead them because you're the, the one that knows about what you should look out for, right? Like the, the observations you should be making.
It's also knowing, knowing your rights as a cyclist. The law as it pertains to cycling, which is pretty much the same as cars, more or less. There's a few minor differences, but yeah.
Well, knowing how those little lightworks.
Oh, yeah, there's things like that.
The new lights were a bit like, oh, I get to go all by myself as a cyclist.
When you said you had actually not used that.
I haven't done that one, I've done that one, the one on Ward Street.
I was really surprised because I didn't even think about it when I.
I don't turn that way very much.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah. It just, it just.
You, you obviously live over that bridge, whereas I go down the other bridge.
Yeah. But yeah, some sort of educational structure that, not a compulsory thing, I don't wanna see things compulsory, but I wanna see them there and available.
Available, accessible, people know that it exists. So if they're thinking, ah, I'd really like to have a go at that, that would be cool. I'd like to bike to work, but I'm just a bit uneasy, well, then they can, you know.
What, things like, things like you're at, you're at a controlled intersection with red lights, understanding that, um.
You can pop yourself in the front.
When it goes green, before you move, ensure that the cross traffic is not giving any indication of movement.
Yeah, right.
Um, when you're going along a line of traffic that's parked on the side of the road, sitting out from the cars and watching the driver's window.
Absolutely, that's a big one, isn't it? Yeah, and you feel like that, that's quite a vulnerable space too. Because you're trying to keep distance from the cars parked, but you're also obviously encroaching on the, um, lane.
Yeah.
So, yeah, which most people are cool, they sort of just go around you or they sit behind you.
And the key thing with that is knowing that the law states that a cyclist should ride as far as practical to the left. The key word there, practical, not in the gutter like a tower.
And not so they're gonna get forced open, uh, off by a door.
Wherever it's safe, so if there's garbage in the, in the, in the left-hand side of the road, you have a right to go, go around that. Um, if the safest place, and this is not just because of what's there or whatever, if the safest place for visibility is right in front of a driver for a stretch, like I said, going around a corner.
Yeah.
Right, because you don't wanna be halfway around a corner when a car tries to swoop past.
Yeah.
So you want to make sure that car can't.
You have to have a certain level of confidence, eh?
Yeah, and I, I can understand that, that can be quite scary.
Yeah, yeah.
For a lot of people, but I think council, and I, I know it seems to be blaming council for a lot of things, but I think council could go a long way to develop some sort of regular educational structure to, and, and confidence building so that people can build confidence in an environment where there's experienced people around them that can, um, tell them, this is, this is, this is the ideal way to do it, this is what you, to stay safe, this is what you need to do, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and that way people can build that confidence and the knowledge base to be comfortable on the road.
Yeah.
While we're building the infrastructure and doing everything else.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Especially with kids, because a lot of kids get a bike and go out riding. Very few of them at that school age have even looked at a road code to know what the actual road laws are. Now, I don't like anything that is a, you must do it, you must have to do this first before you can do this. But I think it would be good if the opportunity, and you know, council could work with schools to do specific school programmes.
They do do that, they have got some school programmes, so, um, there are, there are some, you know, gains being made. But yeah, there could be more. If we're really, you know, intent on shifting people out of cars and into bikes and walking and, you know, other ones, scootering, whatever it is.
Go Eco is doing some really good stuff with their bike hut. So there's a place that people can go along and learn to, learn about their bike, learn how to fix it and tinkle it, change the tyre.
It's empowering to learn all those things, absolutely.
I remember there used to be.
And it reduces your costs, as you were saying, you don't, you know, if you can fix your own bike, it's, it's a good idea, a bonus.
When my sister got her first car, um, she went on and did some, I don't know who ran it. Some course did the things like basic things, I had to change the tyre and, and all these sorts of things. How to problem solve if your car just conks out and what to look for and when to know when your radiator's got a leak.
Bike hut is super popular and it's, um, you know, something that Go Eco's trying to increase the hours of, because yeah, people, there's demand for it, people actually do wanna, you know, learn the skills, I guess, yeah.
Because the other thing a lot of car drivers don't realise is that while there is a burgeoning clientele in the e-bike area for older people who are using an, an e-bike for mobility, um, we've got a bike shop just up here. And I know they, they've had an influx of older customers coming to buy bikes, right, e-bikes.
Yeah, yeah.
The other extreme, and then there's the recreational ones who buy a fancy speedster bike just to ride on, on the weekend, you know. If you're on a bike, I don't care whether you just ride on the weekend or not, if you're riding a bike, that's great. Because if you're riding on the weekend, you might, that might spill over into the week.
It might just spill over, yeah, exactly.
The other group is those people who can't afford to buy a car, who are, you know, be it unemployed or very low income or something like that and need to get to work. Or there's one car in the family, but there's two people working. And, um, a bike means that that other person can actually bike to work most of the time. I know when I was a kid, we had.
And it is more affordable, yeah, so there's some bonuses in it.
I know when I was a kid, we had, you know, really young, down in Cross Street, we had a car and dad had a little, um, um, fifty cc scooter thing to go to, go to work. So the car was left with mum all day, right? Because he didn't, he didn't need anything more than that.
No.
But it was a bit further than cycling where it worked, but so he used to go on this, on the scooter.
Yeah, so now people have got their electric bikes, they can do that all day. Yeah, I mean, this is an electric bike and I appreciate it.
The other thing is you can fold that up, take, drive it to Auckland and just cycle around Auckland if you want or something like that.
Totally, I can do all sorts of things with it, yeah.
But, and so Go Eco is doing some really good things to, um, agreedly from a climate issue side of things, which, yeah, we, we do need to acknowledge that that is a big aspect and a big, a big reason to look at cycling and other forms of transport.
Yeah, so over, what is it, over sixty percent of our emissions in Hamilton are from cars, from transport. So it seems like we can make some gains there.
Um, and when you look at how much room thirty cars take up compared to thirty people on a bus and things like this.
Yeah, all the things.
How that affects traffic jams and congestion and all that sort of thing. And, um, yes, electric cars are, are a good idea, but that, that may solve the emissions thing, but it doesn't, doesn't solve the congestion though.
No.
And what I think people forget is.
And they're also way out of reach for some people.
What people also forget is the fact that it's not telling people they should ride a bike, it's putting things in place so that they can make that choice for themselves.
It's about the choices.
Um, rather than going, oh no, I, I have to drive a car because.
It's unsafe or da-da-da. Or, you know, I have to because my kids can't bike because it's not safe for them. It might be safe for me because I can sort of manage, you know, all the things we've talked about and observe, but for my kids, it's not safe, so I need to figure out how to get them from school and back home safely, da-da-da. So these, these choices, it's, it's felt like they're not open enough, eh?
Yeah, it's like, me not having a car, I wanna go to Wellington, right? Um, we've got plane, train and bus, oh, and car if you drive, right? I don't drive, so we take out the, the car one. What, what would happen if we didn't have the other three as a choice to get to Wellington? That means you'd have to own a car to get to Wellington, right? Or what if you, bus and train are too slow, but planes didn't, weren't there to fly to Wellington? So that means you have to plan a whole day ahead just to get to Wellington. Whereas if you're a, say, an MP or something or other, you gotta get down to Wellington quick. You can get a plane to Wellington, a couple of hours, bang, you're done, right? So it's, it's providing those choices so that people can choose what. I find riding quite relaxing, I planned, like coming here, I planned my, my ride so that I knew when I needed to be here, I knew how long it took, literally it took me five minutes from my place. So it wasn't, there's a lot of planning. But, um, other things like I've got something on the weekend of going way out, Rota Tuna. I checked on Google, it's a thirty-two minute ride, right? Which is a nothing ride for me anyway.
Oh, yeah.
But, um.
You just have to factor it in.
So I, I know that when I leave something else, I've got to make sure I leave that appropriate time.
A different way of having to construct your day, think about your day.
And then I add on.
And it's the same with public transport, you have to sort of, you know, factor in the time that you might be waiting and, I mean, hopefully you've got some access to internet now on these, these things. I'm not actually sure if they're on, if we have internet access on the bus.
Oh, you, you can plan your whole bus trip on, online, um, on the, or on an app, on the phone.
But I mean, it's not wasted time on public transport if you can sit there and do something.
Well, yeah, that's the thing is, most buses are now moving towards having free wifi, for starters.
Well, Tehuia has that.
Yeah, um, but things like, when I do a trip like this, I always plan on an extra ten minutes, fifteen minutes, depending how long it is. Um, because most of the time I don't like to rush, I like to dawdle along at a nice casual pace and enjoy, I enjoy more.
Well, it's probably, it's probably safer to do that. I do notice some people, they go really, really fast and I'm not sure. Well, at the moment with the infrastructure that we've got, yeah, I, I probably wouldn't go too fast. Um, just because I think, like you were saying before, you have to have your wits about you and observe what the potential dangers are all the time. So going a bit fast doesn't feel so safe for me. But I probably go a bit faster than you, just simply because I've got the e-bike thing. I can hurry up the hills, for example.
Yeah, so can I, because mine's an e-bike.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, um, there are times when if I'm in a hurry to get somewhere for some reason, I've hit forty, forty-five k's an hour zipping along, right? Um, I got to, it's quite funny with an e-bike that you have to remember to slow down for thirty k zones for like roadworks and stuff. Because I, as a cyclist, I'm not used to.
You could get a ticket, speeding ticket.
I'm not used to slowing down, I'm used, because that's not good. Before e-bikes, on the whole, unless you're going downhill, you weren't going fast enough.
No, you weren't really, no, no.
But, um, it's like the bridge over here, it, it's a thirty k speed limit. Normally, when I'm going down the other side, I'm hitting about thirty-five k, isn't it?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. Um. No, I think, um, and e-bikes really do offer us a lot of possibilities. So I know the council had a programme for the staff where they could access a more affordable e-bike.
Okay.
Um, somehow or other, or they could, they got an upfront money, I think, and they could get one and then they paid it off, something like that.
Okay, that's good.
But it encouraged the staff to, to get going on that, yeah. So those kinds of initiatives are quite neat, you know.
It'd be nice to see businesses that can afford to do this, do a similar thing, you know, the, the big, big corporations that we have.
Well, I mean, you know, it probably saves them money in the end because they don't have to have as many fleet vehicles, right? So if people can get around on, on e-bikes.
There's also the fact that in general, the health of their staff will go up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Both physical health and mental health.
I don't get overly puffed on my e-bike, I'm not sure about you, but I think, you know, it depends what gear you've got and how much.
The fact that, the fact that you're spending twenty minutes a day riding each way, right? That little amount, I found out from my doctor, is beneficial, regardless of what else you do, that is beneficial. If you do go to the gym on top of that or this sort of thing, that's fine.
Yeah.
But my doctor pointed out to me that, um, I did a couple of things, I could be worse off health-wise if I wasn't cycling, riding a bike.
Right.
Because, um, it's the physical cycling everywhere.
I don't think we talk about that enough actually. And you're right, because the, the health sector, I think, would be quite, um, interested in this idea.
There's also mental health.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
See, when I go and photograph hockey at the hockey rink, right? I hate it when it's raining and I, because I'm not afraid to catch an Uber if I need to, right? And I get lifts from friends and stuff like this.
Yeah, yeah.
There's sometimes with big tournaments, I get hockey players give me a lift home and things like this if it's been raining and I've got an Uber there or whatever. But I prefer to go there on the bike.
Yeah.
And I always, I know I can get to the hockey rink in eleven minutes, flat, right, boom, right? No matter what the traffic. If there's bugger all traffic, I can shave another two minutes off that, right? Um, and it's funny how my brain calculates these things in terms of on a bike, not on a car.
Yeah.
But often I will add another ten minutes on and I will ride and enjoy the actual ride.
Yeah.
It gets me into a mental space.
Exactly, and you can see things better, like, because in a tin box, I think you called it, but we'll say car. In a car, you can't really, like, you can't see up and around, right? That's what I noticed the most is, you know, like, especially I was noticing along, why did he drive? Because you go up a little hill past the Maida Ten here.
Oh, yeah.
And yeah, and you just get a different outlook, like a different perspective and a bit of a view. Whereas like if you're in a car, you're just sort of, I don't know, you're just covered up.
Here's something to consider. In a tin box, um, the human brain works in both the conscious and the subconscious. And in the subconscious, you've got the animal part of the brain that knows things and reacts to them without the conscious part of the brain having the vaguest idea what's happening, right? When you're in a tin, when, when you're on a bike, if you hit someone, it's highly unlikely you'll kill them, you might injure them a bit, but first of all, you won't hit them more likely because you know you're gonna hurt yourself, right? But if you, unless it was a little kid that you hit on the bike, the likelihood of killing them is incredibly rare, right? In a car, if you hit a pedestrian, the chances of killing them is very high, right? Or giving them severe injury, right? So I read a piece about a study that in the back of the human brain of the car driver, no matter how bad a driver they are or how good a driver they are, there is a part of the brain that identifies the responsibility and, and what if I hit someone, right? So you've got a stress level happening way back that you're not aware of because you're in a car.
Right, right, right.
That when those same people were put onto a bike.
A different level of stress, right?
When those people were put onto a bike, they didn't have that stress level.
I'm not gonna hurt anyone, so you haven't got that in your brain, yeah.
They did a bunch of tests to do.
I'm quite safe, it's more that you're gonna hurt me.
Yeah, they did test it with blood pressure and things like this and other stress factors and found that when they moved the person onto a bike, um, in a situation where, like, so they were comfortable on the bike, they, um, they, their stress levels dropped a little bit.
I, I definitely feel that, yeah.
Which I thought was intriguing.
And also, as we talked about with the congestion, like, there is nothing, there's not, it's not a better feeling really to than biking along this row of, of cars and just, because I know, like, my, um, um, husband, he's like very, he gets incredibly stressed and congestion, you know? And so I just think about him and it's like, yeah, this is cool, like, wow, and, um, yeah, just no stress.
The thing I enjoy the most out of that is when I see someone I know in a car and I ride past and I take their route. Well, two elections ago, two council elections ago, I think it was two, might have been the last one, I can't remember. Um, I was at an intersection, at the same time, um, one of the candidates was at the intersection, oh, he's now sitting councillor. And he jokingly said, I'll race you to the, because he knew where I was going, right?
Well, he was in the car.
Yeah, and he goes, I'll race you to the meeting, right? And I didn't race, I just got on the road, gone. I'm, I'd just chained my bike up and turned around and he pulled into the parking space right beside where I was. And he goes, what way did you, how the hell did you beat me? And we compared routes, I went exactly the same route he did, because it was the most logical and straightforward one. I went the exact same route and I beat him, right?
You probably got a, well, it sounds like he got quite a good car park too, but you probably got a bit. That's another thing that I really, I really like about biking is that you don't have to look for a car park and you can just go right to the place.
Well, your bike's there, my bike's over there.
However, you do notice when there's no bike stands, quite a lot, eh? So you think, oh, there's one up there, we could have used that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm chained to that pole because it's close to the CAF.
Yeah.
And I've been using that, I've been using that pole long before those bike racks were in, right?
Yeah, those bike racks are good though, so again, another improvement, right?
We need more of them over time.
Too slowly actually.
Because there was a study, another study I read, um, that talked about a lot of car drivers saying, oh, if you, if you make it difficult for cars, the businesses will suffer, blah, blah, blah. But the study discovered.
Here we are, both, both.
Well, yeah, the, the study discovered that when they made a street cycle only, pedestrian only, and courier goods, but not ordinary cars, um, business, businesses had a rise in turnover. And it's because more cyclists came to those places because they could get, get in and get closer. Because we can literally park that far away.
There's a campaign, I think it's Bikes for Business or, I don't, actually I can't remember the name of it. But they were trying to get that going, um, in, in Hamilton, to get businesses on board with this idea. I don't know how far they got though, but, um, it's, it is a good idea, yeah, we should definitely promote it.
It is quite entertaining when you arrange to meet a friend at a CAF and you're sitting in the CAF drinking coffee, watching him do donuts around the, around the block, trying to find a parking spot. Mate of mine, we raced to, no one will do this with me anymore, but we, the thing was last one at the CAF buys the coffee, right?
Ah, right.
And we were racing, he was technically closer to the CAF than me.
That's a good, um. That's a good, um, yeah, that, yeah. You'd probably win most of those.
He said, the annoying thing was when he saw me blatantly sitting out, outside at an outside table, right? As he came down the road looking for a park and he sees me, goes around the block and sees me again as he went round, and he went round twice around the block looking for a park. And I waved at him every single time. He says, that and the fact that my bike was parked within five metres of where I was sitting was really irritating.
Exactly, I know. Yeah, but I mean, like, it's a habit and you've had it your whole life, but I think um many of us haven't had a habit of biking our whole lives. So it's, it's, it's kick-starting it, you know? And, and then, and then sticking with it and, um, yeah, people, people can do it. But no, no judgements in that people who aren't doing it yet, you know, because we're all on, it's, it's all going that way. Um, and it's just taking those first steps.
Yeah, and, and it comes back to that whole key thing. Yeah, it comes back to that key thing of giving, making things suitable that people
Making choices easy.
The choice.
Exactly.
And know they can stay safe rather than go, they're forced to do something that they don't really want to do.
Exactly, yeah. Because I mean, often I see people driving because they're picking up people left, right and centre, like from different things. And, you know, that's a lovely, you know, caring thing to do. However, yeah, you it could, it's probably, some of it is, is all achievable on bikes. It's just how that's done. Yeah, as a family, you know, um, and how you pull that off. Takes a little bit more thought, a little bit more planning, which is what you were saying before, like you have to plan your day, you know, for your bike and the time that it takes. And we, we've been used to planning days around cars, but it's planning your day more around a bike and how it might work.
It came up in an interview that I was the subject of back a bit. Um, about, oh, but what about the things you miss out on? And I go, well, I haven't really missed, I don't think of it as missing out because I focus on what I can and want then, can do and want to do, more than what I can't do or don't have a chance to do.
Hmm.
So, yes, I can't just suddenly decide, oh, I'm gonna jump in the car and drive to Raglan.
No.
And take photographs.
But hopefully you can get a bus.
But, yeah, I could get a, could get a bus or um someone else. I, I've got friends of mine who, when they go places like that will say, oh, do you wanna come and bring your camera?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I've got a friend of mine who's exploring the North Island bit by bit by doing day trips. Anything within five hundred, five fifty k's is within reach of him. And every single time, he will say, oh, what are you doing on such and such? They're always thinking you're going to Tokarol or Kaupo or somewhere else, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and then sometimes he asks, any interesting places in this general direction?
Right.
And I go, oh, yeah, there's a, there's a bird park there, there's the butterfly thing there, da 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 da. And we do that. Um, and like I went to Wellington before Covid.
Mm-hmm.
I just jumped, I went by bus.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna go by train and I know people go, why didn't I fly? Because I find flying boring. I've flown on a plane twice in my life. It was to and from my sister's wedding because I had a short amount of time to do that in. Due to really dumb planning on my part, um, and waiting till the last minute. Um, but I prefer to go by um either train or bus because I can see the scenery.
Yeah.
Um, and often I've got my camera with me, so I'll be taking photographs out the window.
Hands aren't so exciting, you see the clouds.
Yeah.
And then the up and downs, but.
If it's absolutely necessary, so even if I was to go on holiday with my sister for Christmas or something or other. Um, I would try where possible to plan that for a bus trip or a train trip to Christchurch rather than flying. I might, may do it by bus one way and then fly back or something like that, just, you know, um. But, and of course, if you go overseas, you haven't got many choices either, you know? I must admit, if I was going to somewhere overseas and I could find a way to go as a passenger on some boat, I would, because I enjoy taking photographs on the boat. Um, it.
Well, these are the ways we may have to get around more, you know, as we, yeah, look to reduce emissions really, eh?
Yeah, um, and I think this is part of it, if, as, from the emissions point of view, um if we have land transport that uses less fossil fuels um, and those pe, and it's there so that those people are happy to, say, take an extra day to travel somewhere, right? Um, can then do it. Like, I'd say, say you're going to Well, going to, going to Christchurch, so you add on a day at each end for travel.
Yeah.
Right?
So the slowing down part of, um, you know, addressing the climate crisis, I think has a big one. Not only for transport, but also for just general um life. There's a, you know, I think we've gone through a a time where we've consumed quickly, you know, like we've made like the easiest choice, the quickest choice.
Yeah.
But now it's more like, actually, we need to be a lot more thoughtful about what we do.
That comes out in Wankokotaki's approach of, uh, uh, for a long time, it's been, oh, we've got congestion. Make more roads, widen the roads.
Like, our response is really not gonna deliver us.
That's like giving me another hard drive. Give me, give me five minutes, I'll fill the hard drive up anyway with, with stuff.
Photos.
You know, um, yeah, it's, it's like, I've, I remember with my photography, I started off with an eight gig card.
Hmm.
My now default on my camera is a sixty-four gig card because I'm mostly shooting, I'm shooting a lot of sport. But also if I have, if I'm forced to go down to one of my smaller cards for various reasons. I moan like nothing on earth, bloody tiny little card, and I start to think, oh, I need to buy an extra bigger card so that so they've got another sixty-four gig card there.
Rather than thinking about how it is that you're taking photos and how you could possibly do them differently or maybe not snap everything, you know? I don't know, I'm not a photographer.
We're probably both old enough to remember the days when, when a one, one gig hard drive was considered large and huge.
Well, see, and all of this storage and, and you know, Simon at Go Eco, he's our climate expert, um, and he talks about, you know, people think this magical thing, the cloud, is like, you know, it doesn't really take any energy or, you know, it, it doesn't really cost us anything. But actually, there's huge amounts of energy required to buy those and.
It's the cooling system for Google's cloud storage. I watched the documentary on where they position the cloud storage, the, the big servers and everything and the, the building and everything, um, so that they can cool that entire system in the least impactful way that they can. But it's still using up a lot of energy to keep that cool.
So yeah, who would think that cleaning up your Google Drive or whatever it is is actually climate action, you know? Reducing the amount you store online, yeah.
But, yeah.
Anyway, there's lots of things we can do better, so.
Yeah, so if you were to get into council, what would be one or two things you would look at trying to move forward? Whether they're already happening or whether they're not even thought of yet, is there anything that you would look at? Attempting, keeping in mind, you've got to work in with everyone else on council, so I don't say getting it done, I talk about moving it forward and, and getting progress done on it. Is there one or two things that you would put higher on your agenda to start working on?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, what we've been talking about today is obviously one of those things, um, improved cycle infrastructure. Because it could be better still. It is getting in the right direction. And I think this council has made some great gains on that due to the advocacy of a number of the councillors on there. Um, so it's definitely supporting that to continue. Um, I also would love to see the nature in the city uh, strategy continued to be invested in too, because I think a lot of the and you've probably biked through some of our gully systems on your bike, I hope.
Yeah.
Um, you know, beautiful and amazing and great for our kids, because part of it, I mean, learning to look after our planet, you have to kind of appreciate what it, what it entails and what it is and all the, all the birds and the creatures that are, are part of it. So I think our nature spaces are really important, but not only for themselves, also for our water quality, our river, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Looking after our gullies, we're looking after our, our river as well.
Do you wanna try being a photographer and go places and go?
Yeah, exactly. Um, might not do that.
That's not gonna make a good photograph.
Oh, so and the lake is a big thing for me. Like, I really believe that we could have a swimmable lake. And I think we gave up on it in the nineteen eighties, I think. Might have been the last time people.
Apparently it could swim at once.
Taking a dip in there. And I think it's totally possible to get that back.
Okay.
Yeah, um, the main issues that we have there uh relate to the, the uh duck poo and the, and the geese poo uh in the lake. So looking at ways of managing those populations. Some of the geese fly in from, I think I'm not, I'm over that lake somewhere. So it's like figuring out how we can, you know, look after these populations of, of animals, but um also look after our, our lake at the same time. Um, and some of the runoff that could be mitigated through, I don't, um, different uh wetland areas or um rainwater gardens, that sort of thing. There's just, there's things that we can do and I don't like that we've given up on water, you know? I feel like we've almost accepted that water is dirty and it, it's just, what way? We could have this beautiful glistening lake that people could enjoy and, and, you know, people like you who who don't have a car and can't just whip out to Raglan whenever they may like to. Um, you've got this beautiful place where you can go and enjoy on a hot day, it's gonna get hotter, um, to cool down, so.
Yeah.
There we are, that's one thing.
Have they ever dreamt that lake?
No, that would be very expensive.
Okay.
But, but one of the things they are doing is they're having a number of workshops in the next couple of months where they're looking at all of the possible options for cleaning up the lake, based on the research and evidence that I've got already, which is, they've, they've got lots of data that they're collecting on the lake over the years. So um to make some, you know, these are the recommended things that you should do to improve the water quality and make, um, lots of, yeah. But not only water quality, just the whole environment.
Because that one out by the zoo is really nice, that reserve out there. I do think they need to make entry with a bike a little bit easier.
Right, yes, I agree.